Check, check. Hello, everyone. Welcome to today's meeting, February 27, 2025. Planning Commission meeting. Can we please stand for the, oh, I call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, we do have the oath of office, which will be administered by Maria Valdez for two new planning commissioners. I think we're gonna do the oath down here.
We stand right here. Good morning. Maria Valdez, Registrar of Voters, here to administer the oath for Miley Field and Monica Rosenthal. So I will have you both raise your right hand, and then I'll have you each state your name, and you'll repeat after me. I do solemnly swear. You guys can do it together at this point, yeah. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Okay, if I can have you if I can have you sign your oath here before you guys walk off. So Monica, if I can have you sign right here. Thank you. And then Miley. Your what? Who has your address on? We, oh, that's, all right.
I'm gonna keep taking photos until she gets here. Yay, thank you. Oh, that was good. I like that one. Okay, thank you.
Check, check. So Commissioner Field, welcome back. I think C was waiting for you. And Commissioner Rosenthal, I haven't had the pleasure to meet you, but I look forward to working together and see your contributions to the Planning Commission. And it's exciting to have all the seats finally filled for the year 2025, and we got a lot of work ahead, so welcome back. Okay, so verification of legal notice. Thank you. And we do have one item in the consent agenda to approve the minutes from February 13, 2025, Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing none? So three in favor, two abstain. Motion passes. And public input, anyone from the public can speak on any item that is not in today's agenda. And if you would like to speak, come up to the podium and you'll have three minutes. And we'll take a quick glance at the Zoom room to see if there's anyone in there. Seeing none, and seeing none in the chambers, we will move down to our timed items. I do have a time of 9:05, so we will begin with our first timed item. Public hearing, consideration of major use permit renewal, UPX 24-02, for continued operation of the La Monica off-site advertising billboard sign. Major use permit 97-05, 97-05, and minor use permit 99-17, located at 2560 East State Highway 20 in Nice, APNs 201-040-02. And we have staff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pablo Guerrero, a planner from Community Development Department. I'm here to present the major use permit renewal for La Monica signs, and also there is a representative present in Zoom. Request and project purpose, approval for renewal of an off-site advertising billboard originally approved with major use permit 97-05 for an additional five-year period. No adjustments to the billboard or site are proposed. Compliance with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and area plan to be determined by Planning Commission. Site description, the parcel size is approximately 24.53 acres. It is split zone, so commercial district and design review combining district, and on the north side of the parcel, it is rural residential. The general plan designation is service commercial and rural residential. The supervisory district is three. The parcel is adjacent to State Highway 20, but is outside the scenic combining district. The project layout, the structure features two faces, each measuring 240 square feet, and stands 22 feet tall comprising of a 12-foot post supporting a 10-foot wide billboard. 20 foot, and the length is 20 feet in wide, length for the billboard. The existing lighting shall continue to be directed at the sign, downcast lighting, and shall not create glare to the neighboring properties, which shall be in compliance with the Lake County standards for light pollution. The sign shall be maintained in condition for the life of the project. The billboard shall be continued to comply with all applicable provisions of the Caltrans Outdoor Advertising Act. Applicants are required to renew with the Caltrans in 2028 if they continue to use the major use permit renewal. Project analysis, the Lake County general plan. Policy LU 7.19, commercial design guidelines on billboards along with amortization provisions as necessary to protect and preserve the beauty, character, economic, and aesthetic value of the county. Site designated as service commercial accommodates for billboards with the major use permit. La Monica signs use permit UP 97-05 is an established and is in compliant use. It does not detract from Lake County's aesthetics and provides economic benefits. The renewal of the major use permit aligns with the land use elements, goals, and policies. The Upper Lake, Upper Lake and Nice area plan. Policy 3.5.2B, to maintain the quality of the view shed, off-site commercial signs and billboards shall be privated and designated scenic corridors. The renewal of the major use permit retains previous conditions of approval. It limits the sign, the sign size to align with the area plan and the zoning ordinance. The lighting must be downcasted and shielded. Billboard is outside of the designated scenic corridor in the area plan. Renewal of the major use permit complies with and supports the Upper Lake and Nice area plan. The Lake County Zoning Ordinance, Article 20. In accordance with Article 20, Section 18, it is necessary to adhere to the signage regulations outlined in Article 45. Article 45 regulations for signs, billboards are allowed to be extended to, for a maximum term of five years, which is obtained with a major use permit. It was originally obtained with a major use permit 97-05 on September 25, 1997. No changes to the permit is being requested. Project operation remains compliant with zoning Article 45 and is allowed to request a renewal of five years. Article 53, Design Review Combining District, it is necessary for a project to be reviewed for its design if it's along selected scenic routes. The design of the billboard will remain unchanged, therefore, the existing major use permit, as previously noted, is adequate for the design review process. Thus, no additional review is necessary. The project is in compliance with the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. Environmental review pursuant to CECLAS 15301, Class 1, Existing Facilities, the proposed major use permit renewal is exempt from further environmental review. The exemption applies because the billboard is an existing facility and the project involves no expansion and of the existing use. Major use permit renewal recommendations, adopt category exemption CE 24-47 from CECLAS under Section 15301, Class 1, Existing Facilities, and approve major use permit renewal UPX 24-02 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation for today for the major use permit renewal.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the Commission, towards staff?
I have a question. I didn't see in the regulations where, when it says abandonment of permit, what does that mean? Does that mean that there's no advertising up there? Because that, that sign, to my recollection, has been in that particular situation with just a phone number up there for quite a long time, so can it be that way for what extended period of time before it has some sort of other advertisement?
That's a really good question. We haven't actually entertained that. So long as it still is in use, so the advertisement or the, the phone number listing for the option of advertisement, we would still consider that active. It's a lot easier to tell on different use permits than it would be a billboard that's still just standing there. Yeah, I'll think about that. We haven't done it yet.
I just wondered. I've seen the phone over there for a long time, and I didn't know whether that constituted being used or had been abandoned, so that was just my fundament on that.
Yeah, good point.
I just have a quick comment. Would that technically be considered advertisement?
It's an advertisement for advertisement, yeah.
Also, I think it would be more, the way I would see it is if the owners of the sign didn't renew, that would be considered the abandonment.
That makes sense, because our first follow-up is staff would then be to call to see if they were still using that billboard, and it's, it looks like, because they did apply for their extension, that they do intend to use it in the future.
Well, they're hopeful.
Yeah, they're hoping.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and I would like to add on to that comment as well. They also have to renew Caltrans, the Outdoor Advertising Act, and they've been doing that every five years with the major use permit renewal. So that's like another sign that shows it's active as they're applying for a Caltrans renewal permit.
I think they have to apply in the next three years, correct?
Yes, by 2028 to keep it active.
Perfect.
I have a question that's related but not exactly on topic. Are we still issuing new permits for billboards of the county?
We have not, the board has not declared any sort of moratorium, so it is still open. We have not had any applications for quite some time.
Yeah, I just have a comment then. I think it's clear that billboards have become obsolete, and I think they are a public nuisance. They block the view. It's a beautiful county, and I'd like to send a message to the Board of Supervisors that we perhaps put a moratorium on. That's all my comment.
So seeing no more comments from the Commission, I'll bring it back to, or I'll open up public input, see if the, if there's any public comment on this specific item. I don't see anybody in the Zoom room, is that correct? Nobody in the Zoom room, and I see that the applicant is here, is that correct? The applicant for the, on Zoom? Applicant, would you like to say any, anything for, for your project?
Is the applicant Samsung SM S92 or Trudy?
Trudy.
Trudy, okay, then let's ask on mute. Okay, Trudy, if you can unmute.
I appreciate your consideration, and I don't have too much comments right now.
Okay, thank you. Seeing more comments. I think we're getting feedback. Seeing comments, I'm closing the public input and bringing it back to the Commission for action.
I guess the only, the only comment I had, I thought the applicant was gonna provide more background, was some of the, the trees that are growing, and I don't know if it's in the same property that eventually are gonna obstruct the sign if it continues to grow, so I was kind of wondering what the maintenance was gonna be on those trees when that time does approach.
If they obstruct the sign, then I have to go through, I believe, DOT to get permission to trim anything.
Thank you.
So I wasn't aware that the trees were blocking it.
Okay, thank you very much.
The, the trees are not blocking the view as we talk right now, but eventually they're gonna grow to that size.
Thank you.
And still waiting for action or discussion, further discussion on the item.
If there's no additional comments, I'll entertain the motion.
A second.
Okay, thank you. I move that the negative declaration, which was previously prepared for major use permit UP 97-05, does meet the requirements of the California Code of Regulations, Title 14, Division 6, Chapter 13, Article 19, Section 15301, Existing Facilities, Class 1 of the CECLAS Guidelines, and that no additional environmental review needs to be prepared with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 27, 2025.
Can I get a second?
Second, second.
And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four ayes and one opposed. Motion passes.
Furthermore, I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit renewal UPX 24-02 applied for, by Trudy La Monica and property located at 2560 State Highway 20 Nice does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of Lake County Zoning Ordinance and grant that the major use permit renewal, subject to the conditions listed in Attachment 2, and with the findings listed in the staff report dated February 27, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes with four ayes and one no. Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission's recommendation, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate, the appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the Commission's final determination.
Chair Chavez, if I might go back to Commissioner Field's comment. If it, if the Commission does have, the process of getting notification to the board would be actually us getting consensus right now from the Commission to put an item on the agenda to discuss it and take action for such a recommendation. So I wasn't sure, I didn't see a lot of nods, but I wasn't looking, so if it is the consensus or the feel of this Commission that you'd like to discuss the possibility of recommending a moratorium on billboards, that we'd appreciate some direction.
Personally, I'm pretty neutral on the subject, but if there's anyone in the Commission that would like to have that recommendation made.
I'd love to see it discussed. I think that it's an issue that probably our tourism industry might be interested in discussing. Yeah, I think it should be put on an agenda. I don't know if the proper form would be here or there.
It would first come to the Planning Commission for an, for an opportunity to discuss and actually take action. Since it's not on the agenda today, we can't do that here. But if the Commission would like, we will add it to the next agenda.
I would like that.
I, I'm open to having the conversation, and at this point, I don't have a preference either way.
As am I. I'm wondering if this should also be part of our, an area plan or the general plan as, as we're going forward, if, if we make a recommendation.
It has not previously been discussed in either the lay packs or the GPACs, but we could, we could keep that in mind going forward, because we're not done with Lake County. So I see three. We'll go ahead and get it, get that on the next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
And moving on to our non-timed items. None. A department update?
Thank you. So a number of our staff have been working diligently, one might say frantically, to prepare for our transition from Acela, which is an electronic permitting system that has been a long bane of our Community Development Department existence, over to a new, more manageable, more intuitive system that's called OpenGov. If it sounds familiar to anyone, that is because OpenGov is the electronic permitting system used currently by the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport. So we are transitioning over, which I think is gonna be great, because now people looking for permits, either in the cities or the counties, will have the same system to deal with, so hopefully that'll make it easier for the public. As part of this transition, we're, our counter is going to go dark while we're transferring data into the new system. So on Friday, this Friday, the 28th, oh, tomorrow, our counters will be closed. Anyone who wanted, who wants to schedule an inspection, instead of doing it online just for tomorrow, we ask that they call the department, and we'll, we'll continue to schedule inspections. We'll continue to do inspections, it's just that our counter will be closed. We will open up with our shiny new system on Monday, March 3, and everything should, well, we'd like to think everything's gonna go perfectly smoothly. We do anticipate a few glitches, so we do ask for patience with the public while we work on this system that we think, when we're done, is gonna be way better than what we've had before. And Michelle, who has been knee-deep in it for quite some time, may have some details about the new system that she'd like to share.
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna add, for our current planning projects that are in process, we will be inputting those ourselves into the new system so that it's not a burden on the applicant to reapply essentially, because the data's not coming over as active projects from our current system, so we will be contacting all of our applicants and working with them diligently and doing sort of the heavy lifting for inputting that application into the system. lifting for inputting that application into the system so that hopefully it'll be minimal efforts for them. And then one really great thing is we'll be able to directly communicate through the application software of OpenGov, and they'll be able to see where they're at in our workflow status, which is sort of our processing step, so there'll be a lot more transparency and information for them readily available.
One last thing, or did anyone have any questions on that?
Yeah, one quick question, Director. So for example, the glitches and whatever the is experiencing during this transition, have you guys like reached out to the city of Lakeport or Clear Lake to see if they kind of had the same, the same issues?
We have been in close contact with the city of Lakeport during this whole process. It was actually helpful for their recommendation that we decided to choose this particular system, because they love it, so we're excited. It's just the county system is a bit more of a beast than a city, so. But we're, we're really excited about this new system. It's gonna be great.
Last thing I'll add is we also have a, a hyper care whole plan set up for each division and working with OpenGov over the next two weeks to troubleshoot any issues.
And then the last item I have is, once a year, I like to host our department staff at my house for food so that we can hang out away from the counter. So this year, it's going to be next Thursday from eleven to three, and if any of you are interested in attending, you are more than welcome. And I promise you, we won't talk about any planning stuff. From eleven to three, sort of an open house, and I can get with you later regarding my address. That is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So now, I call this meeting adjourned at nine twenty-four.